I keep wondering why I know that name. I don't know, I can't keep track of it really.
You what?
Ah, yeah.
I don't think so.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Thank you.
See, both she and I have the plain container, but you don't know what's in it.
Right. It does have an advertisement on it, but...
Oh, okay.
Mine's tea.
Are you all ready?
Yes.
Ready? Ready? I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please join me in smoking our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the additional certified classified personal actions for consideration, item F dash two.
I have a movement, a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I will declare that the hearing for the 2020-21 budget is open for discussion. Are there any patrons who wish to address the board? Are there any board members who wish to speak on the budget? I would entertain a motion to close the budget hearing.
I move that the budget hearing for the 2021 be, budget be closed.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm not going to ask for discussion on this part because this is just to close the budget hearing. All those in favor of closing the budget hearing at this time, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2020-21 district budget as presented.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2021 district budget as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by mark. Is there a discussion? I would just like to thank KJ for your hard work on getting us to still stay at the same mill levy and keeping everything going again. Thank you so much for all that you do. It's very appreciated. Dr. Carlin?
I might just add to that. In typical times, KJ doesn't have a whole lot of a window to prepare the budget. Usually sometime late May to early June is when she gets to get started. But the last several years, due to uncertainty at the state level, I don't think she's gotten her budget forms before the first of July for several years. And so to be able to put that all together in the timeframe that's required is really amazing. So I would also like to thank her and recognize the effort that she's putting in to do that.
Thank you, KJ. Any other discussion? Mark?
Not a discussion, just echo further comment that really along with this, there's a lot of gratitude and congratulations to go along with the staff as an entire team, but also the teachers and that whole conversation. There's just a lot going on, a lot of moving parts. And I think some of our biggest challenges are yet to come in how the state budget deals with some of their shortfalls as well. So again, I just hope everybody, I thank everybody for their effort on this. And it's going to take a lot of patience and perseverance through this next year as well. So, thank you.
With that, all those in favor of approving the 2020-21 district budget as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You have a budget, KJ. I'm not seeing any public comments today or correspondence. Now, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of all consent agenda items as follows.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Janine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Which takes us to the curriculum reports. Glenda, remote learning update?
Okay, thank you. Let's see, there we go. I'm going to talk a little bit about the remote learning and where we are today. But I'm going to do it with some help. And before they come up here, I actually just want to recognize them. Starting in July, we hired the teachers for the remote learning. And then we partnered them up with people that were willing to help with curriculum and come up with the lessons. They've been working since July. Jessica Byrd from Newman University actually offered to help with curriculum as well. So I just kind of want, if they're here tonight, anybody that has helped with remote since July, if you could please stand. All right, and some of them are going to come up here and help me with this presentation because they're the ones that have been doing the bulk of the work. But we're going to give you some numbers first. So these are the parents, the numbers of the parents that have signed up for elementary, pre-K through fourth grade. So you can see probably quite a few of those kids. And we have for elementary. And we're actually in the process of trying to add more teachers at this stage of the game because of those numbers and trying to make the contacts through the day and the curriculum and the interaction that's required by the state. So we'll be adding to this group right here to help with that. Intermediate numbers. This changes a little bit at the intermediate center and the middle level because they can do blended learning. So they can come in for a couple of classes, maybe that band or orchestra, and do some at home. So those numbers are a little bit different. You'll see the blended column over there as well. And then with the seventh and eighth grade, they are also going to be using edgenuity with some of our curriculum. So we're going to put the two together so it isn't just a canned curriculum, if you will. The high school numbers, the high school is going to be doing the same thing. They have remote students and blended students. So the students can come in for part of the day or, and do part of it at home. Or they can do full remote. And those are the numbers for that. Okay, Michelle, I'm going to have you come up and talk a little bit about the technology and what you've been doing with these lessons.
Thank you. So our whole theme has been that we're building the airplane while we're trying to fly it. We're taking...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's very directional, so you're going to have to adjust it.
Is that better?
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so we have been working on building the plane while we're trying to fly it is a theme that we're going with, with our remote learning. We're taking what's good and we're adjusting what isn't working. At the beginning, when we had our technology, we have a fabulous green screen, a camera. We have what's called the sling projector that helps to process, process the videos. And then we kind of started seeing for our kindergarten, first and second grade teacher, that wasn't going to work as easily. They still need to interact, they need to sit down, they need to read the stories, they need to write and model handwriting for our students. So we have just been trying to find ways that we can make these videos engaging for our students and also showcasing all of those amazing skills that our remote teachers are bringing to us. So we've been working with iMovie, we've been working with PowerPoints. And so that's what we've been doing. We've been scaffolding our technology just like we would our instruction for our students. We're scaffolding our instruction for our teachers. We also were able to get some video consultants to come in from a local church where they were able to give us ideas on lighting, on what's the best way to record these films, how we can incorporate all of those great skills that our teachers have had. So it's been a process where, like we said, we're taking all of the good and then whatever's not working, we're trying to find a better solution for it so that we can put out the best videos that we can for our students.
Thank you. I'm glad I'm as short as she is. That worked out well. So my name's Jessica Byrd and my daytime job is Assistant Dean of Outreach for Newman University. And I train students to become teachers and hopefully get them employed in Garden City schools. My role in this is through my dissertation, my doctoral program, I'm working on my field experience and it happens to be with remote learning. So I've kind of been serving as a support system for the teachers, giving them feedback, providing them research on best practices with instructional design. And one of the things we'll be doing hopefully is a book study. The book study also happens to be a book study that Crystal Steinmetz is going to be doing with the instructional coaches. So hopefully there will be a kind of a nice overlap between the coaches and the remote learning teachers with that book study. And I've been just providing them a kind of a playbook of my own that I've been developing for part of my field experience that has tips and tricks and tools for remote learning and kind of how to design that so that it best suits the learning needs of the K6 students. So that's it.
I'm Becca Birkin, the sixth grade remote learning teacher. And I am giving the remote teacher's report from our teacher corner. The things I want to talk about today is our work clipping up, if you think of a clip-up chart in the classroom, things that are going well. We'd like to show you some clips of our favorite videos that we're making. And then I'm going to take you through a walkthrough of a lesson that I would give with some of the tips that we've worked with, with instructional design.
Excited that you're all here and we're doing some remote learning. Now, today is the first day of math. In order to succeed, you must try. So today, we're going to be going over the eight mathematical practices of a Jedi master.
Well, today I'm going to teach you one, one that you probably are a little bit familiar with too. Today, I'm going to teach you one called Think, Pair, Bear. Now, that probably rings a bell to you because I bet in kindergarten and first grade, you heard your teacher singing Think, Pair, Share. Well, this is a little different because when you were at school, you could think and then pair up with a neighbor and share your thoughts. That was your way to get your ideas out that you were thinking. Well, when you're at home, you can't do that. So here's what we're going to do this year. You're still going to think when I ask you something and you're still going to pair. But how are you going to do that? You're going to do that with a bear. Yes, a bear. So what I'll need you to do is find a bear. Any old stuffed bear that you can find.
I can see that some are big and some are small. I can see that there, I have lots of different colors and I have some different shape items as well. Let's try blocks that are the same. If I use blocks that are the same, I can build a much bigger tower. Wow, look at that. How many blocks did I put in this tower? One, two, three, four, five blocks on this tower.
In kindergarten, I have a joke for you. Can you tell me why B is very, very cool? It's because he's setting in the AC. Have you ever been on a nature walk? A nature walk is when you go outside and you're looking at things in nature. Today, you are going to get to go on a walk, but it's called a literacy walk. So get your iPad and get ready to have some fun. The first one says, "Find something that rhymes with the word bee."
Today, we're going to create a bird. It won't look exactly like the one here in this example, but we're going to be tearing paper to build the strength in our hands, our motor skills, and learning how to use glue the correct way. In addition, when your students are finished creating their paper bird, they will make a story by drawing pictures around the bird and relate that story or tell that story to someone at home or someone at school.
Grapes, they're not just what we eat. They're how we learn about civilizations and the people around us. You might be asking, what is grapes and how this is applied to social studies? Well, grapes helps us to learn a little bit about the people and places within them. For example, G stands for geography. We're talking about the physical location of where you live and the place around you. So the last lesson was a lesson that I'm giving in our first and second week of social studies. And grapes is kind of just how we get to know civilizations. But before we get to know civilizations, a big thing in digital learning and even learning in the classroom is getting to know students. And so this is a great piece that we use to segue that learning. So it has to do with social studies, but in that first two weeks, I want to get to know my students. And so what I did is I would play a video that basically describes what grapes is and how we'll learn about all the civilizations in ancient history. But in this case, the assignment is asking about the grapes of them and their community and how they play in with their community. So it could be asking about the geography of Garden City and even the geography within where they live. It could be a cul-de-sac or the trailer home parks or an apartment, things like that. And it goes to politics, right? Clearly, sixth graders are involved in politics. But how, how do they interact with the people at school and the people who are in charge at home? So it asks questions about that. And in that, I'm able to get to know a little bit about the kid and their life. And then we move on to allowing them to create something. So we need to mix a circunious and circunious task. We don't want them to be on the iPad all day long. And so they can create something, whether it be a poster or postcard, that represents all these things they're telling them, they're telling me about themselves. And it could be pictures, they could use magazines, they could take family pictures and kind of make a collage, things like that. But there's a lot of choice in it, what they want to create and how they want to create based on what they have at home, which also helps with our learners that might not have all the things that we have in the classroom. We give lots of ideas of things that they can use. The biggest thing is being able to present it and being able to engage our families as well as being able to collaborate with other students in the classroom. You saw those numbers, they're pretty high, getting 60 students in a room even like this. Sixth graders aren't going to want to say hi to one another. So getting them on a platform such as Padlet or Jamboard allows them to share their work and then comment on each other's without having, making it less, what's the word? Less intense, right? You're not having a face-to-face conversation, but they're learning how to make comments on other people's work as well as getting to know them. You can invite parents in to like a Flipgrid activity where you can post their work on Flipgrid and parents can write positive or say positive comments to what they learned about their kids and what they might have produced. So that's kind of a walkthrough of that lesson for you. The other thing we wanted to talk about is learning how to still make family engagement when the families aren't coming to the buildings. That you can kind of imagine that's kind of a hard thing to do. So there's two things we're kind of looking at. One is virtual engagement, so how we can utilize the technology that they have at home. And one is really bonding families together. They're going to be having a new relationship at home. I don't know how many of you have had kids home since March. I'm sure your relationships have changed with them. And so really how to allow them to create an activity, that's what we did at the KAR summer program, really structuring those activities at home that they can have at night. And so those are some things that we brainstormed. One of the things we talked about is giving a remote learning open house, allowing them to meet the teachers and ask questions and have all of those conversations before school that you would when we typically have our buildings open and parents get to come to our classrooms and meet our faces. Instead, they get to see our faces digitally and we have breakout rooms and comment boxes that they can use as well as Google Forms, utilizing that in a productive way to allow parents to ask questions that I could email them later or maybe ask questions that they want me to address with their kid on the first day of school. Another idea through instructional design meetings that we've talked about is like zooming in, kind of like drive-ins, right? So I will ask parents, what is the best time that, you know, if I was to host a parent night, that you could drop in? And so utilizing that platform of communication, so this year we selected Remind, and giving a drop-in, hey, I'm going to zoom in today. I'm going to be available from two to three. And I want parents, you guys come and talk to me. Is there comments or compliments or maybe concerns you have that we can talk with about? Such as maybe I want more to do at home or a specific activity for math that we need more help with, or I could use some tutoring, my child could use some more tutoring time. Things that I might have not noticed yet or even things that they just have questions about and want more clarity. So those are some ideas we've talked about to engage those parents online when they can't just drop into school in the front office and come meet with us if we're zooming with other kids. Another thing we talked about is how do we still get those family engagement Title I minutes? So we want them to come into the school and we want them to feel like they're a part of our community, but they can't, right? And so how do we create that online and give those parents some activities that they can do at home as well with us? So we talked about physical education, having active home nights. So giving them a plan of what they're going to do that night. I know during the spring, the intermediate center buildings had competitions between each other and it was called the Olympics. And so they did it at home with their families and then reported the scores and it came a tally chart, so it was kind of fun. We talked about technology education nights. We know that students that are selecting remote learning might not be the most tech savvy and their parents could use more education. And so what better way to provide a community service as well as helping their students with their technology at home? KSD did a STEM night with educators and their families to demonstrate what that looks like in your districts. So there was a series of rooms you could join depending on what interests you had or what age level of kids you had. And each room came, you went in and it had a different activity that you did with your family right there with a remote learning teacher. We talked about some family game nights that are related to the content. So some math games that they can play, some word games that they can play to help us with our content, but at home. And then the biggest part is allowing them to see their students' work, you know, student showcase. That's kind of the biggest fall of them not being in the classroom and us having teacher packets to go home to show parents is that all their work is online. And so allowing them to engage with their students' work online by either making videos or submitting comments or just having a gallery walk where they get to see kind of their classmates' work and celebrate their students because that's a huge piece of this.
So are there any questions for any of our remote team that's here tonight?
I have one. Sorry, Dana.
No, go ahead, Jenna.
I was just, and maybe this is one you can answer for me. What is, do they, you have an average idea of how much screen time a student's going to have based on their blended or remote?
KSDE's latest guidance is one minute per age. So they're working on keeping the videos short and then giving them time to do the activity on their own with their, or with their parents.
And is that just per lesson or is that...?
Per subject matter.
Subject matter, okay.
So there would be a short video for ELA and then an activity they can do at home for ELA, then a short video for math later. And then we're also throwing out the PE-type activities that they can do with their family, like Becca talked about, and art and music and some of those things that they can do at home with their families.
So is there an average daily number they've thrown out or...?
360 minutes. Yeah, they have to...
Say that again.
They have to have six hours documented in their log.
But that's not necessarily screen time?
That's not screen time, that's total minutes. And that couldn't, that also includes personalized learning. So if they want to know how we get bread, they can study on their own with their parents. This is wheat, this, and take it clear to maybe making a loaf of bread with mom and then talk to the teacher about this is what I learned about.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
So mine was more, and I know it got touched on, but the number of students. So you said that you were going to have some kind of like interactive type thread things where the students can interact with each other. But from the clips, there will be some live lessons. So are you splitting the kids up into smaller pods then to do those live lessons?
That, that's what we're hoping by hiring additional teachers since our numbers are so big that each teacher would be accountable for about 20 to 25, 27? Yeah, somewhere between 20 and 30 students, I'll go with that. Because the numbers keep changing on us.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the transition back and forth? If someone is initially thinking they'd like to do virtual and they decide they want to go in person or vice versa?
Sure.
How much flexibility do they have to go back and forth?
We are allowing two weeks to change their mind so they can actually dip their toes in the water, so to speak, and test run it. And so they spend two weeks in virtual and then say, oh, you know, I'm having trouble getting my kid out of bed or they're not doing the homework or they won't show up for the live zooms, this isn't working. And they can switch back to onsite and, and the flip side. So if they come onsite and they're worried about the levels and maybe there's a yellow classroom already, so I want to just go remote. So they have those first two weeks to make changes. And then we ask them to stay in for the semester.
Can you talk to us about how you got to that two weeks?
We actually looked at what we offer students to change their schedules in the middle and the high school. We always give kids about two weeks to change their schedules if they need to.
And if someone is, someone's at school and they become concerned about their safety, but it's past the two weeks, is there some type of individual appeal process or a way for them to try to appeal to the idea of making a change after two weeks?
Yes, we, we have an appeal process where they go to their principal, their building principal. So if they want to go to remote, then they would go to whichever school they're attending that principal. If they are doing remote, say in Michelle's building and they need to go back onsite, then they can appeal to Michelle to go back onsite. And we thought about that because we have a lot of, for example, foster kids that move around. And so if they start out and this foster parent wants them to do onsite and then maybe a couple of months in, they go to a different foster home and they want them to do remote. So we have a way to appeal to the principal and make that change.
Thanks, Glenda.
Any other questions? Dana?
I have one more. So are the remote lessons going to be the same as the lessons that are taught in the class? What I'm trying to get to is, you know, the potential of then having to go online and then are those students all at the same place?
For grades K6, we are using our curriculum and our pacing. So they're creating the videos following the same lessons that, that the onsite folks would be doing. Then the middle school and high school are using edgenuity, but our teachers are matching up those standards in edgenuity with their curriculum and they're blending that so that if we have a student that needs to go... if we have a student that needs to go hybrid maybe in the middle of the semester, then they know exactly where in that Edgenuity curriculum to pick those standards up. So we're aligning those two curriculums.
I noticed the fifth and sixth grade was pretty low for the blended. Is that just for ones in music classes?
Correct. We, we just opened that up for sixth grade in case they wanted to take band or orchestra.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenda.
Okay, thank you.
No, I can just go later. Well, I don't know if it's the right time. I was just curious if, as we were, parents were signing up for the hybrid or the blended, if there were asked the particular reason why they were choosing that versus in class? Is that something that we have asked or we've thought about asking?
I don't believe we asked that when they were registering. The survey that we did in late July, I think, asked kind of why they were leaning the way they were. We did that survey mid to late July about kind of what they were thinking. We had about 1,000 responses. Now we've had just, just a little over 6,000 students registered, but we, we didn't specifically ask that question as part of registration.
Okay. It's just something I was curious.
Well, they snuck out really fast.
I know.
Tell them all thank you for all of their hard work and dedication this past summer. So, and I know Becca was trying to get a whole bunch in before she even gave birth. So special thanks to her in trying to get all that done beforehand, so. Suzette, are you ready to talk about the KSU Leadership Academy?
I'm Donna Augustine Shaw and I am the university facilitator for the Dodge City Garden City Educational Leadership Academy. And Dr. Johnson and I are so excited to be here with you this evening to recognize Dr. Carlin and your district for the partnership academy that we have with your district. Suzette is going to visit with you just a little bit. I'm going to give you just a quick highlight about the academy. This is my second opportunity to work with Dr. Carlin and the Garden City District. So it's our second cohort partnership with Dodge City. When we did our first one, we kept a pretty good pulse with your district staff and the students about that new partnership between the two districts as well as that partnership with the university at Kansas State. And both from an instructional viewpoint and the students, they really love the opportunity to collaborate with a neighboring district to learn about what happens at the leadership level from two perspectives. And so it has really been an awesome opportunity. So again, I'm going to share some of those highlights with you. So the students love that collaboration and from the university's side, this partnership with your districts is truly a partnership. And I'm going to highlight a few of the ways in which we do that here in just a minute. So your district works with teacher leaders who apply to the academy and then are selected by your district to be students in this two-year cohort program. And so they earn a master's degree in educational leadership. If they desire to go on and get their building license in the state of Kansas, they take two additional courses, and that's educational law and educational finance. And we encourage them to do that because this academy serves as really an awesome recruitment and retention tool for your district. We do a combination of face-to-face instruction and blended with technology. So tomorrow, Dr. Johnson and I will be here in the, in the board office actually, working with the students that are in our second, we're just starting our second year of this Leadership Academy. And so they've completed one for a full year and we're just starting the second year. So we'll be doing that instruction face-to-face with them tomorrow. And then we will, we alternate during the course of the semester, either with face-to-face or with technology-blended instruction. So one of the very first things that we do when we start an academy is to work with the superintendent and to do a planning session, at least one. And we keep regular communication throughout the academy because we really listen to what they have to share with us about what's important to your district, the goals that you have, maybe some of the very specific things that you're targeting for improvement. And we work together collaboratively to plan instruction, certainly upholding expectations from the university's side, but really customizing the academy experience with your districts based on what your current goals are. So that's really an energizing thing. I know Mr. Hogan helped also with our startup in doing some planning with us. And since your finance director is here or was here, she did a phenomenal special guest presentation for our Leadership Academy during the, the first partnership academy that we had and did a fantastic job. So we also invite speakers from your districts to come in and talk with students to help them broaden their perspective about what makes the system work. So understanding how school budgets work in a very basic way helps teachers understand how that system works to support what happens at the classroom level, to help students, support staff in your communities and your families within the community. So just a couple of quick things about that partnership that you do as a district to help support that work that we do instructionally. Mrs. Goldsberry-Lewis helps assign mentors for each one of the students that's in the academy. So typically it's their building principal or sometimes it might be a different, a different person. We have one building this year that has five, six, half six. Yeah, so when there's that number in one building, of course, they're going to spread that out a little bit with mentorship. So that's one support that you offer. They're also allowed, students are allowed to go out and do what we call required activities that help, again, build their system perspective. So like during year one, they might have attended actually a local board of education meeting, they might have went to a site council meeting at a building in which they don't teach, they might have went to an administrative council meeting. So they select based on a list that we put together, together, and again, attend those, those sessions and give us a reflection. There's a lot of onsite support, the logistics that are, that are covered and supported here by the district for holding onsite classes, books, substitutes, travel, those kinds of things. And then one of the really cool things, it's kind of a payback to the district, and I know Dr. Carlin was really excited about some of the projects that came out of the last academy, and we're really excited about our students during the second year, the projects that they're working on. So they pick a project that maybe their building is working on or has started, or it might be an interest area for them, and they really kind of move that forward to the next step, practicing leadership while they're doing it. We look for that. We have certain criteria that they have to develop in that project. And what's really neat is that many of those districts end up being sustained in the district because of their impact. And so we work with them throughout the two years, but it's during their second year that they really kind of take hold of that project. In fact, the first meeting that we have in September, our first class, they'll be bringing to us their finalized project proposal signed by their mentor, and so they'll be moving that forward here during year two. So if I had to snapshot what it is we do with that leadership partnership, it is to build leadership capacity in your district. And it's just such a pleasure to work with your district, your superintendent, Dr. Carlin, your support, the support staff at the district office. Mrs. Goldsberry-Lewis is new to our liaison position this year and is just doing a fabulous job, learning the model, working with us in a collaborative way, collaboratively to plan instruction for each class that we have. So again, it is a recruitment and retention tool and we know how, how important it is to build leadership in your district. We need good teacher leaders, we need good instructional coaches, and we need good building principals who lead buildings that serve students and families every day in your community. And so it really is an awesome model in which to prepare leadership in your district. So with that, I'd like to introduce again, Dr., Mrs. Goldsberry-Lewis, and then we'll have Dr. Johnson come up and recognize Dr. Carlin for all of his wonderful support of the Leadership Academy in your district. So Suzette, could you share just a little bit?
As Dr. Donna stated, retention is something that we look for in building leadership capacity in our district. So out of the last two cohorts that we've had, there's been a total of 21 teachers that have participated. And right now we have 17 that still remain in our district and have some sort of a leadership capacity, whether that's a teacher leader or an instructional coach or a principal, but some type of leadership capacity within the district. So we're really excited to keep that going. She also talked about the special projects and I just wanted to touch base on a couple that our teachers are going to be working on this year. A couple of them are district-wide. One of them is for new teachers, helping them with classroom management and just giving them that support through the rest of the year. And the second one is we have newcomers that come into our district and they're in a newcomer class for about 30 days. And then they go back into, transition into a general ed classroom. So one of the projects is developing a system so that that information that the teacher learns within those 30 days can go back to those general ed classroom teachers, so that we're sharing that, that information and those teachers aren't having to start new learning all the information, which will be beneficial for our newcomer students. There's a few that are grade-specific or department-specific. We talked about instruction and the remote learning and one of our, our teachers is doing some streamlining, making sure that the remote teachers and the, the general ed teachers in, onsite, that all those standards and that are collaborating and are aligned. Our early childhood is developing an assessment team for all of our early childhood students so that they will have a, a specific assessment team as well as they're looking at a new assessment to use. And then one of the last ones is for a specific school, but it's a parent resource shelf that parents can come in and find resources that can help their students. Maybe they have a struggling reader or maybe they're struggling in math. So there's some resources and activities that they could come in to the school and find there. So I'm really excited to see how these go this year and then hopefully at the end of the year, we'll be able to bring some of those teachers back in and they can share, share what they've done and share their results. As Dr. Donna stated, some of these continue on, so I'm really excited about some of these, such as the new teacher classroom management, to see if we can continue them on through the next years to come. So I think they would be beneficial for teachers and students as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. So I'd like to say just a bit about this award and then share with you what went into the nomination process before I present the award. So the, the University Council for Educational Administration is the premier national organization that works with higher ed institutions that prepare school and district leaders. And they, they present an Excellence in Educational Leadership Award that is selected through, through a nomination process. We nominated Dr. Carlin in, in large part because of the, the work that we do with him through this partnership. As you heard, this is a pretty innovative way to prepare school leaders. It's, it's, it's embedded within the district, it's a grow-your-own initiative, it's a way to prepare leaders who not only know how to lead in a generic sense, but know how to lead in a particular place. They know, they know the strengths, they know the challenges, and, and they're, they're ready to hit the ground running as, as leaders. That kind of innovative program wouldn't be possible without strong partners and, and not just, not just any old partner. So the, the nomination letter that we wrote is pretty long. I won't read it to you, but I want to share three highlights from that letter that are the reason that we nominated Dr. Carlin and, and we believe the reason that UCEA agreed with us that he was deserving of this award. So the three things that are required for a partner for us to be successful in this program are, one, that person has to be an effective leader himself or herself. They have to know what they're doing, that they have to be a capable leader who knows what's expected of a leader and how to lead effectively. The person also needs to know their district. They, they need to know the assets that are present in their district, they need to know the challenges that are there, and they need to, to know how to marshal the assets to, to overcome the challenges. And finally, a good partner in this program is someone who needs to know how to build capacity in others, how to grow leaders, how to support people's development, how to help them grow and, and become better at what they want to be. So those are the three reasons that, that we nominated Dr. Carlin. They were the three primary things that we shared as part of that nomination process and UCEA agreed with us. And so on behalf of the Department of Educational Leadership, the College of Education, and Kansas State University, I'd like to present to Dr. Carlin the 2020 Excellence in Educational Leadership Award from the United Council for Educational Administration.
Dr. Johnson and Dr. Donna, thank you for the, the vote of confidence. I can't give enough credit to the people that have been in our academy, the people associated with our academies. This idea was, was really kind of a no-brainer when we had the opportunity to get involved. The approach, when I went through the, the master's program to get a building leadership endorsement, was really focused on becoming a principal. And what was so innovative here was that the program is really designed around, that's, that's an option, but it's really designed around building that capacity in all teachers and their leadership and that if you want to do the building principal part, that's fine, you can go on and do that. But certainly it really gives all of our teachers the opportunity to develop and put into practice the leadership skills that we all possess. So it, it really has been phenomenal, the, the opportunities, the, the work that's been done, and it's, it's been a great, a great partnership to support our district and support us here, and I'm just pleased that I could be a part of it. Thank you for all of your, your work to support us. And I might mention too, sometimes out here in Western Kansas, it's kind of easy to be forgotten and the work of Kansas State and other universities that support us out here is greatly appreciated to help our, our professionals develop their trade. So thank you very much.
I didn't realize that you were going to be receiving this today or else I probably would have thought of a few things, and for me to be speechless with regard to this because it's something I think our board has known for a long time. And it's great to see you recognized in this capacity. So thank you for nominating him and for all that you have done because he, in my opinion, has been a tremendous asset for our district. And I think that has been highlighted especially this past year with all that he has done and had to adjust with regard to the pandemic. So thank you so much. This is truly an honor for our district too. So thank you, Dr. Carlin, for all that you do for us and the leadership that you have shown for this district. Okay, I think that speaking of pandemic leads us to our next update on the pandemic with the Garden City High School COVID-19 plan.
Just by way of introduction, when we presented the original plan to you, Steve was not full staff and indicated that he would be bringing back a more detailed plan. And so he's going to kind of walk you through tonight what he and his team have put together.
Yeah, in the original piece, the high school group was one of the first, was I think the first group to have a completed plan and we just kind of went off on our own. And our teachers and principals, as we started working, we divided our work into three separate areas. areas: operations, curriculum, and teacher needs. And then now we've regrouped on some things. We have a lot more information than we did when we first finished this plan in June, the end of June, and we've got it in a format similar to the other buildings that presented, it's been a month ago, on things. So I'm going to walk you through things. One thing you'll notice on this plan is that a lot of the pieces are similar through each level of school operations, in our six operating levels. We felt that we wanted to start with procedures that would be applicable throughout the levels, and not bounce back and forth with our procedures every time that our district changed an operating level, or our building changed an operating level. So we wanted to start with things that would stick throughout most of the levels. So starting really at Level Two, because Level One is essentially normal building operations. In Level Two, according to our district operating plan, we're still masks recommended and not required. We would require all visitors to complete a health screening before entering our building, as we're doing now, with a health questionnaire. Currently, we've got temperature checks built in, but that's the governor's order and not necessarily our district's operating plan, two separate things. Family communication was something that we had in our original plan also, but we didn't have a tool identified, and now we do with Remind, so updating it to that. Zero hour. We have put together procedures in our building, so that students will enter for zero hour through specified doors, and only those doors, so they can have their temperature checked each morning and do a health questionnaire as they come in. So our band that starts out early, and marching band, they'll have procedures for checking kids in each day. Zero hour waits, they'll have a certain door to enter and to follow through with theirs. And then we also have zero hour student council, chemistry, English, and government, and they will have specific door, a specific door that those students have to enter in. Our morning routines are going to change. Our building traditionally has opened at around 6:20 in the morning. Now, we are restricting that early morning entrance to 7:00 a.m. And so that will be a change, that we will be advertising out to our clientele, and that we will be making, except for zero hour. Immediately, that change will be necessitated, will be necessitated through, or because of temperature checks. But we also thought, just because of the grouping of kids and monitoring of students, we didn't feel that opening at 6:20 was still appropriate. We'll still serve breakfast in the commons, but it'll be a grab-and-go style, not what they're traditionally serving. And as soon as our commons starts to fill up, and we can see kids in the gym area, but at 7:20, when teachers arrive and on contract, we're going to start sending our kids and pushing them towards their first-hour class. All staff will complete a health questionnaire each day through a Google form. All students will do the same, asking about their current health conditions, and whether they've been in contact with somebody who may be awaiting the results of a test, for instance, for COVID. The results of that, the reason we're using a Google form is because we can have a setting where our nurses are immediately identified if a student answers yes to any of the health questionnaire questions. And so then we can immediately begin tracking kids down and trying to figure out what's the reason for the yes on their health questionnaire. In hallways, passing periods, of course, in Level Two, we're still masks recommended, so students will be recommended to wear a mask, encouraged to go straight to class, no grouping. When students are passing, to reduce hallway congestion, when students are passing to opposite sides of the building, they're going to be allowed and encouraged to go out of doors, to just travel out here on the front sidewalk if they're going to the opposite end of the building. And so that's going to be a change for us, it'll be a change in our normal procedures, but that'll help us reduce congestion in our hallways during passing. And also during passing periods and other times, water fountains won't be available, we'll be encouraging students to bring water bottles, and the filling stations will still be available, but we will not have water fountains available. In the cafeteria, our strategy is going to be spreading students out. Students will not be allowed to sit side-by-side, crammed, ten to a table, there are tables of ten out there. We won't be sitting anyone directly across from another student, won't be sitting anybody right next to anybody else. And we're going to accomplish that by adding a whole lot more tables. We're going to be spreading the students out, and adding a whole lot more seating. KJ has been great, and we've purchased a bunch more tables, we've got plenty of chairs, it's the tables that we need to be able to spread kids out. We can use some hallway areas that we don't normally use for our lunches to do this. We can also use the track that would be above the gym, that's adjacent to the cafeteria, to the commons, to be able to spread kids out. So a normal table of ten becomes a table of four or five. And so we've reviewed this with our director of health services, and the food service directors, and director, they're both on board with it. And we're going to encourage kids, weather permitting, sit outside. Thanks to KJ, again, we've been able to order some picnic tables and things that hopefully will come soon, and will be set up in our kind of outside area, right outside of the commons, there's a large cement area, and we'll put some picnic tables and things out there for them to be able to eat outside, and spread out some more. Curriculum and classroom-wise, we'll run our normal schedule, but we will start, even in Level Two, we'll start with assigned seats, distancing when we can, and there'll be some classes where that's going to be very tough, and we're not going to be able to. Masks recommended if social distancing is not an option. We'll start recommending that desks face in the same direction, even in Level Two, so that we don't have to change our practices, once again, every time we change an operating level. Handwashing, sanitizing, recommended before and after class, start and end of class, and also before and after lunch shifts. All desks and shared equipment will be regularly sanitized. It's in our district operating plan that each teacher will be provided cloths and spray bottles of cleaner, so to be able to wipe desks and things off of. We're also working with departments independently to find out what their needs are, as far as cleaning their materials. The needs of an art teacher for their shared supplies are going to be different than the needs of a science teacher. How do you disinfect goggles between uses? And so we're working with those departments individually to try to figure out what's your best solution for cleaning shared materials. And sometimes it might be buying another set of materials, so that while one set's being cleaned, another set can be used. But each department's coming up with their individual plans for that. At the end of the day, all students must exit the building by 3:15, half an hour after school ends. Once again, to avoid them just gathering and wanting to hang out after school. Bus students, we're considering releasing them early to reduce hallway traffic, we're going to wait and see how the first week goes, before we decide if we have to send our bus students out a minute or two early. We're also going to encourage additional pickup locations around the loop, not everybody needing to pick up at the front door. Because if everyone's trying to pick up at the front door, within the first half an hour of school being dismissed, traffic's going to be backed up pretty far. So trying to encourage families to pick up at the point, pick up at the backside of the school. Some families may or may not really like that option, because it's not as convenient as swinging right by the front door, and my kid gets in and I leave. But we're going to have to try to do some different things to avoid congestion. Band, choir, orchestra, theater, we have been closely, all summer long, we've been meeting and monitoring the recommendations from the National Federation of High Schools, from CACIA, regarding safe practices. You may have heard and seen several times, I know Mr. Tone a couple of weeks ago mentioned the Colorado State University aerosol study. There've been a lot of studies on what's safe for performing arts, and our departments are right on it all the time. And because of that, we're going to have to change how we do large band classes, large orchestra classes, large choir classes. I think right now, according to those guidelines, the maximum number of people in the choir classroom while they're doing their thing is, I think she said nineteen, no, she said fifteen, I'm sorry. Orchestra is much less than normal. Band, I think, is maximum of fifty, around fifty players plus percussion. So that's going to change how we operate first-hour large groups, for instance. So we've got a lot of changes to make with that, and our departments have been doing great. Band is investigating mitigating equipment such as bell covers for their instruments to catch some of the aerosol being produced. Choir is in the, I think musical theater, they're in the process of making what they call singing masks, special reinforced masks for kids to use when they're doing their performing, and trying to get to where they can provide two per student in the choir, so they can have one, use it, go home, wash it, and the next day have another one. So they're working really hard on some of those things. But the key thing is, in our big classes, we're going to have to operate smaller, more distanced groups. If we have 200 kids in marching band first hour, if they're outside, okay, they can spread out. If they're inside, only a certain number of those kids can be in the band room. We're going to have to take the rest of them and spread them out in the commons, spread them out in the gym area while they work on. We've purchased some sight-reading music programs for those kids to be working on, so they're still getting music instruction, just not being able to play. They've been working really hard on those things. PE will be outside whenever possible, whenever weather allows, whenever the temperature is high enough, the weather allows, they will be outside and spread out. And we will be reducing locker room access. Not every student is going to get a PE locker this year, and we're not going to require every student to dress out for some of our PE classes, so that we will reduce grouping and small, lots of kids in small areas. And we will continue to regularly sanitize equipment, just like we've been doing through our summer waits programs. We will still continue our emergency drills through all levels, we're still required to be doing those, we're just going to have to do them a little different than we normally do. So those are our basic levels, and they continue throughout. As I said, we took a lot of procedures, put them in place in Level Two, so we can use them no matter what level it is. So for these other operating levels, I'm just going to point out to you the differences, the things that are different. In Level Three, we start with masks, masks being required. All staff, students, and visitors at Garden City High School will be required to wear a mask, or approved facial covering at all times, with the following exceptions: eating breakfast or lunch, participating in a mask break approved by a staff member, or participating in physical activities or other activities that are difficult when wearing a mask. And our masks must conform to standards set forth in the dress code. That is our school policy on masks. Visitors, family communication, all stay the same. The other change in Level Three is when, in the hallways, where instead of saying students are recommended to wear a mask, they're required to wear a mask in the hallways. I think all of, Level Three then stays consistent with Level Two, as does Level Four, with the exception of the library. Once you get to Level Four, we have some spread in our community, we're becoming more restrictive. Our library will then be closed to drop in students, just going to the library to hang out and check out a book. It'll still be open to teachers during the day, who want to use the library for instruction, but not for drop-in with students. Let's see. Another change in Level Four is at the end, concerts and events. In keeping with our activities plan, when we would have a concert of any kind, or a large event of any kind, we will do that with a restricted audience. And so that is a change, once you get to Level Four. We will cut down on the number of folks that we have in. Let's see. Level Five is where we've got increased community spread, increased school spread, and that's when we will have student attendance be affected. Once you get to Level Five in our district's plan, we will start an A-B day rotation. And according to our counselors, it's going to be much more effective at Garden City High School if we do A through L, and then M through Z. There's only a difference, there's a difference of less than 100 kids, if you split it that way alphabetically, and they feel confident they can make any adjustments that we would have to in student schedules, to allow us to have our 50% capacity. Most of the other items stay the same in Level Five, except for when you get to curriculum and classroom. Students will have a hybrid of onsite learning and remote learning. Students will be held accountable for attendance and grading, will proceed as it would have in a regular school setting when students are working remotely. So we're going to keep kids accountable for the work, even when they're at home on those days. Class schedules will run with the following guidelines: all desks being six foot apart, assigned seating, no face-to-face groupings of any kind, desks must face the same direction, any small groups in class must maintain the six feet, mandatory hourly handwashing, sanitizing, and also before and after lunch, and, once again, desks and all shared equipment being regularly sanitized. And, let's see, Level Five, those are the big changes in Level Five. And then moving to Level Six, we are all at home, we're all remote. All content will be delivered online through Google Classroom, with Google Classroom, ShowMe, and Edgenuity as our means to provide instructions for students. So our teachers are going to be working hard through the first part of the year to make sure, their teachers will be working hard to make sure students are familiar with those three platforms, just in case we have to go remote, and they can keep delivering their content. Teachers will continue their lessons in curriculum, so we will maintain fidelity to our curriculum, regardless of if we have to go remote. Teachers have been working really hard to do a lot of planning, as far as how that's going to look, and how they're going to maintain their curriculum. Once again, students will be held accountable for attendance and grading, will proceed as it would on a regular school setting, regular school communications through Remind, no extracurricular activities or events in the building in Level Six, no students in the building in Level Six, and staff access to the building being coordinated through their supervisor.
Alex, I think you said you had some?
Question?
Yeah. More for Steve.
Questions? Dana?
First of all, thank you very much for this updated plan with more detail, I really appreciate that. I just want to clarify on the A-B schedule. Is that like a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays off? Is that?
No, in our district plan, it specifies it is a straight every-other-day schedule. So one day it's going to be three days a week for kids, one week it's going to be three One week it's going to be three days a week and then next week it's going to be two. I think that, is that right, Dr. Carlin, the way we had it set?
Was that, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
I did, I thought of a question.
Yeah.
I noticed in your plan, it talked about hand washing.
Yep.
Or hand sanitizing. At one time, I feel like the plan was going to require hand sanitizing every hour.
Yep.
Is hand washing going to be an option or when available? Because I just have concerns of them sanitizing too much.
Yeah. Well, there are some classrooms that have the ability for students to, to use sinks and, and to wash. Not every classroom does, but some, some do. And so in those, in those classrooms, in those settings, absolutely, hand washing can happen. And not everyone does though, and just sending kids to go, sending a bunch of high schoolers, "Go wash your hands," whether, you know, it may or may not get done.
Right.
So yeah, in that, in that time, in a regular social studies class or something like that, then we would sanitize.
Okay. And I, and I appreciate that, having that in there, that.
Yeah.
The option is there. I understand if you expect every kid in your class to wash their hands, even if the sink is in the classroom, it's going to take a lot longer. But just having the option there.
Yeah.
I think is nice, so thank you.
Sorry, I had one more.
Yeah.
Just thought of one. So has this had to, like, changed the number of maybe extracurricular options or even just class options for students?
We have not as yet changed any of those options. One class that we have some concern on is we have just added a job shadowing class to be able to send our kids out into the community to get some real work-based experience. And we're, we're kind of worried about businesses wanting to have our students come in and out in the age of COVID. And so we're a little concerned about that. We, we are still in the early processes of reaching out to, to businesses that may be interested or that we might want to place our students in. So I don't have a ton of, of information yet on how that's going to proceed. We have some backup plans on what we'll do with kids for career exploration and some things if they have, we have trouble placing them in businesses. So that's, that's one thing that, that jumps to mind pretty quickly as far as our classes and our curriculum.
And then with, like, for example, how you talked about we couldn't have the same number of, let's say, band students, for example. Are you doing more time options or are you just spreading them out, like, in different areas more?
Well, we're going to keep the same time options for now. Second semester, we might be able to do some different things. First semester, especially like in our, in our big classes, our band, it's really tied around marching and they're outside for a lot of that. So second semester, we may have to add some more, some more, find some ways to add some more sections and, and do things a little differently. But first semester, we, first semester, the department feels they got it pretty well covered.
With the, with the choirs and those types of things too?
Yeah. The choirs and the orchestras have, have a plan. We are lucky to have a couple of, of assistant teachers that are going to be, their Gumby factor is going to be really high. They're going to be really flexible as far as choir can only work with 15 students and the class has 25, so the assistant is going to take the other 10 out and have them work on sight reading or some other music assignment. So yeah, that's, we're going to have to be creative in our grouping.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have some questions?
Yes, Madam President, I do. But I'll just keep this brief. But again, first of all, thank you so much for the additional information.
Yep.
What a Herculean task this is. I, you know, getting to Level Five is such a disruptive step, but recognizing the focus is on the students and their education, both their social, emotional experience, their experience in high school as, as high school students, but also their education and trying to keep them, you and your staff working with them as long as possible.
Yep.
The A-B schedule is very disruptive.
Yep.
And brings up all kinds of questions that I know you'll work out the details for.
Yeah.
People that have their best friend in the other category, those kind of things are just going to be very disruptive.
Yep.
And I really appreciate the comments of Dr. Carlin in his address to the teachers, welcoming them back, sort of the context of sacrifices do have to be made.
Yeah.
You just kind of hope that it's not you, so to speak. But that's just the environment we're in and awful lot of people are making sacrifices and, and so it's a community effort. I hope we don't have to go to Four. Now, that is so disruptive for the teachers, for the classes, for the students, but I'm grateful for your step under, I said Four, I meant Five.
Yeah.
Five is certainly better than Six.
Yeah.
And, and I feel for those high school students that, that found themselves jumping to Level Six, so to speak, in, in April.
Yeah.
So I just, I don't know, I, the question on, like, clubs.
Yeah.
I presume at this point, A is A and B is B and neither of the two shall come together. But again, that's going to be tough on clubs, too.
It will. It'll be, it'll be tough on clubs and in talking to the sponsors that, that I've personally visited with, they feel that if, well, in, in your theme about making a sacrifice, if the community gets with the spread and the school gets to that spread, then, you know, having, when, if your art club meets every few weeks, having an extra meeting, having one meeting for the A-Day kids and one meeting for the B-Day kids is something that they're willing to do. If, and the hope is, and I think maybe Dr. Carlin's hope too, is if we ever get to Level Five, it's something we can get to the community, maybe a bridge that we have to get over and we don't stay there permanently. Because I do worry, as someone who works with kids and also teachers, I worry about those personal connections. It's the personal connections that are, that loom really, really large in the development of a kid, whether it's a coach or a teacher or an administrator or, you know, Dana has served as a, as a mentor where she got to meet with the girls in school. And it's that connection with a community member that happens because of school that is, is big. Yeah, it, it's really important. And if, and if doing an A-B schedule for a, a few weeks or maybe a little longer is what we need to do while our community kind of recovers from a, a big outbreak or spread, then it's what we need to do to get back to Level Four and Level Three.
The, the only other comment I wanted to make, Madam President, is again, the, I think the nation still is grappling with some of these things in our, in our Finney County Health Department and other health departments on even the unfortunate situation where a student is maybe tests positive and, and then you go through a period and then are they ready to come back? And, and, and the notion is yes, after, you know, after no symptoms. But from personal experience, youth can have no symptoms, you know, asymptomatic.
Yep.
Except maybe for loss of smell, which was the case in our family, and, and temperature is no test at all. And, but okay, there's an order out there, but I'm just wondering, I'm just sort of expecting that teachers in their infinite ability to not only teach but adapt, will find ways to deal with the question. And so power to them.
Yeah, and, and that extra, and I realize it's not infallible and it depends on, you know, it's like any piece of data, it depends on the quality of the data you collected. But those health questionnaires that we're hoping will be filled out each day, we're going to ask each student to fill out and make a part of our normal routine, first hour, fill out your survey. For staff too. And some of those questions do involve, have you been around someone who is pending a positive test? And some of those things can sometimes identify, help us identify a student who may be at risk but may be asymptomatic. And so, you know, we're hopeful that they get answered correctly and, and that's why we're doing it, but it's, it's one more layer that we've had and, and it's, we've had some practice with it with our summer programs and we've had some practice with it with our staff returning, you know, and answering the health survey each day. And, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but it's one more layer with that survey and that questionnaire that we can use.
That's all I know.
Can I ask you a question?
So along those same lines, that health questionnaire.
Yeah.
Who populated it? Is it the state? Is it the, the, the health, Finney County? Is it OSHA? Is it the generic questionnaire? Or is it more curtailed to us and our students and staff?
Self-created.
Can we get a copy of that? Can I get a copy, can we all get a copy of that questionnaire?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. I think we modeled it after what we were doing with staff. So the health department has seen it. It was, it was as they reviewed the plan that we put together, but I don't think it was anything that was, like, taken specifically for schools or students. It was, kind of grew out of what we were doing with our, with our staff.
Yeah, those are the same seven questions that we use for staff or any visitor that would come into the building. And we just took it from the, took it from the staff questionnaire, we used it for summer weights, and we just decided to keep using the same questions for this. Yeah. Nothing, nothing specific or tailored to a high school student or something like that.
Will that be on an iPad?
The, the Google Form link can be then just saved on the home screen and it's my understanding from Mr. Wise with technology, if we send him the link, he'll just create a, an app on the homepage of every student's iPad. He'll just push that out to all of them.
So that app will be earmarked with that student's ID or staff's ID?
No, they'll have to, on our system, they'll have to enter their email and, and name. So then we can immediately track if they flag anything. Yes, we automatically get, here's the kid. It's not, the Google Form is not set up that way. There is some capability to do this health survey through Skyward, which would be, but we have some concerns about the reporting. With Google, we can set up an instant email report so that a coach or I or our nurses get an immediate notification anytime someone answers one of those questions. With Skyward, that capability isn't there. You've got to go look for it. And so that's why we've chosen so far to, to use the Google Form, just that notification piece that if someone says, yes, matter of fact, I have been exposed to someone who's waiting for a positive COVID test, or waiting for a COVID test result, that would immediately, as soon as they hit submit, pop to me and the nurses so we could go figure out the situation around that student's response. And I use that as an example because that was one we just had with a student participating in volleyball who said, yes, there's somebody I'm with all the time who's waiting on the results of a, a test. Well, it turns out when we investigated that their relative was going to have a surgery, an elective surgery, and they couldn't have that elective surgery until they had a COVID test. So it wasn't something where there was a concern and there was, but it helped us work the system to where, oh, we could immediately investigate that and figure out.
Okay, so with the student's name or the staff's name.
Yeah.
That you'll receive, obviously we'll, we'll be prepared for the privacy part of that name.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's covered. And then how fast, so digging into just a little bit of the weeds.
Yeah.
When we show up at a project site that we work at and there's some people there, let's say St. Catherine Hospital or, or a school that we're working on.
Yeah.
We have to sign into an iPad before we even enter the building and we have to answer this, this questionnaire.
Yeah.
The generic questionnaire, I think that we're all.
Yeah.
But here, we got zero hour and we're talking about the kids will have a daily screen, it's probably a temperature check.
Well, a temperature check and they'll do the health survey in zero hour.
Okay, so.
They'll be their first class of the day, whether it's zero hour or first hour.
I understand that. So what I'm getting at is, do we really want the student to walk through the building to get to zero hour, their first class, before they even answer that health questionnaire?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like chicken and the egg to me.
Yeah.
Does it make sense?
So we, we are trying to educate kids that if you're symptomatic, don't come to school. Educate parents that if your child has symptoms, don't send them to school. So the, the health check is kind of a, a catch-all if it's got past that. I should also point out that the temperature checks are not part of our plan, so those will only happen while we're operating under the governor's order.
Okay.
That's a requirement of the governor's order and I don't think we have that required in any part of our plan.
No.
Okay, so I appreciate that, thank you. And then, once you get that questionnaire tallied, if you will, by first hour or zero hour. Is that going to populate the results right away to where we can pull that?
Immediately.
Person, he, she, staff, student?
Yep, immediately.
Mascot out of there?
As soon as they hit submit, if the answer to one of those questions is yes, there's an instant email to me, me and the nurses. And we'll expand that to the rest of my team. So if we need to go find a student to get them for the nurses to do a further evaluation, then we can do that.
Okay. And then when we seem to have an incident in past years, it seems that the kids and their parents know what's going on here when the police have showed up for something.
Yeah.
Before the board members do.
Yeah.
So are we going to be able to have, because of a case, are we going to have, be able to have at-real-time results, whether it's daily or every other day, of what's going on before we find out from the community?
So we will, we have a couple of different reporting mechanisms that we're working on with our health folks to be able to track these. And I can share those with you on a regular basis. We're anticipating a, a daily meeting, at least for the first couple of weeks to start school, to kind of review what information is coming in, mostly related if we have positive cases. If we have, if we have cases where students are suspected, we probably won't get that level of data reported to us. But if we have cases where students are sent home and, and likely going to be tested or once they've been referred for a, for a test, they're presumed positive by the health department. So we should have that kind of data and I am anticipating having that on a daily basis and I can share that information at the end of the day.
And I'm not trying to supersede any protocol. I'm sure there's other people way ahead of me in line that, that's one, that's got it now, but I'd sure like to keep up. And then this might be more of a question for Glenda and it's probably been answered in some of the other stuff, but there's so much information that's been thrown at us in the last three or four weeks that it's hard to keep track of. But, you know, when we had the, the hybrid, the blended, we're in school, besides the risk of COVID or the numbers, what's, what's our magic number of e-learning or blended learning, the kids are at home, that, is it 75% of the student base that are like, you know what, let's just push it all to, to at-home learning? Is that too early of a question?
So let me tackle that one too. So I don't know that we have a magic number. In our gating criteria that we've been working on locally with the Finney County Health Department, one of the, one of the pieces that we will be looking at from the district standpoint is our student absentee rate. We'll also be bringing to the equation our employee absentee rate, our substitute availability. So there, there probably is a point that it, it would make sense, but to boil that down to a specific number, I don't know that I could do that for you right now.
Well, I didn't feel like a percentage rate or something like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, because I think it'll be a combination of those factors. And again, we will be, through our nurses, we believe we will be able to track the number of our kids who are sent home from school for a, a potentially COVID-related issue or COVID-related symptoms. So we should have that information also, we think, daily. If, if a parent keeps a child home, we'll be relying on what they tell us to code that in our system. And so if we have incomplete information there, that may not be completely accurate. So until we really kind of get a gauge for that, I don't know that I'd want to be nailed down to a number, other than to say, number one, we know it's best for kids to be at school as much as possible, face-to-face, that is what we're shooting for. And it's going to be a burden on teachers when their classrooms are split, so that's something else to take into account. And how well that works dealing with those. And how well that works dealing with those split classrooms, how that's going probably enters into that decision, how that's working for teachers. So it'll be one of probably eight or nine different factors that we look at. But I don't know that there's, it in and of itself has a magic number.
Okay, so along that same line, what about bus routes? If we decide that that bus route is too dangerous to drive that bus down and to pick up only three students versus 35 kids, depending on a social distance, is that a call that you make at that time?
I couldn't hear that question. I couldn't hear it. I couldn't hear your question, Alex. Sorry.
You're fine. So as far as the bus routes as well, if there's only one kid or two kids that were, students that we're going to be able to pick up with that bus, do we shut that bus route down? Do we forget? And then the other part of that question is, when my kids were going to Jenny Wilson, I lived over on, right across the street from KH, they were able to grab that bus to Jenny Wilson and go to Charles Stone's, which is great. And then Charles Stone's dropped them back up to Jenny Wilson and then they caught a ride back up to our house. Is that a concern that we need to have or a conversation we need to have about the intermixing of the kids from different schools to different schools on buses? As far as just how this pandemic is shaking out?
Sure, so for the most part, Charlie believes that he will be able to isolate kids on buses by school. So there won't be a whole lot of intermixing schools. I don't want to say exclusively, it would never, it could never happen. But I think he feels pretty confident that we'll be able to keep that fairly pure. There could come a point, again, where if we had most of the kids on a particular bus, I guess that it may make sense to not run that route for a period of time. But again, we will have to kind of look at that. Hopefully, we don't run into that. If we're running into that, then it's probably going to cause us to really look at our procedures with having kids on buses and probably some bigger issues. But we don't necessarily have a plan specifically for that other than we will be monitoring transportation. Charlie will be monitoring that regularly too.
I might also add that in transportation.
I'm sorry, Heath, can you come up to the mic? Too bad, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I might also add that transportation, as Dr. Crowe mentioned, they'll be traveling most of the kids to the same school. So they'll be following whatever level that that school happens to be on with the bus as well. So at level three and above, every kid will be wearing masks anyway. So those like groups going to the schools, they'll be following. So if Victor Analysis, as an example, goes to level four, then they'll be following the same procedures for level four. So he feels like he can match the schools based on his routes that he has.
And how's practice going? From the different activities, how is practice going?
What Mr. Tone has shared with me is that we haven't had any positive cases. What Mr. Nordby shared, I think, was as close as we've come. And that's since practice resumed on the 17th. We had one positive case with our summer program towards the end of the summer where we had one student who tested positive, was in a group of four, I believe, and the health department investigated. And I think the other three students that were in close proximity to her were cleared and there was no after-effects from that.
Thank you.
To follow up on that then, so we're using Fannie County to follow up or using their guidance. So if we have a positive kiddo, then they're letting us know who needs to quarantine or be tested or anything like that?
Correct, so this is a public health function. It's a reportable disease. So when we become aware of a case, we report that to Fannie County Health and then they make the determinations about whether or not that student, what students... And we will assist in the investigation. But they make the decisions about what other students need to quarantine, if any. They make the decisions about whether or not students should test or whether they have to stay out for a certain amount of time. I think there's a perception out there that a student would have to test in order to be able to return to school. That's not accurate. They can, they could wait it out without doing a test. There's a quarantine period. But in order for them to return to school, it does take the authorization of Fannie County Health for them to be able to return to school.
And that would apply to staff and teachers as well as to whether or not they would have to quarantine or test?
Correct.
Okay. And then I had a question too, and I know I've asked this before. But when Mr. Nordby mentioned accountability, are we going to look at our truancy policy again and maybe revamp it to talk about the 360 minutes and stuff like that?
Yeah, right now, we're really working with building principles and ultimately we'll be with teachers on how we handle attendance. Because we have the opportunity for kids who may be home with COVID-related issues to be able to work from home. And as long as the students do work from home, the question is, should we be counting them absent or should we be counting them as present? And so really kind of defining what's an absence, what really shouldn't be counted as an absence and what's excused and what's unexcused. We're still kind of fleshing that out a little. I hope that our, I mean, the truancy law is the truancy law. So I hope that our current policy related to truancy will fit within that and we maybe aren't looking necessarily at a policy change. But that may not be true. We may have to bring something back to you, but we are looking at that.
My concern is just, I know it was scary for people in the child welfare system because teachers are the ones to see at first a lot of the time. And with those kids not being in school, I'm sure we missed a lot. And truancy is a lot of the times the first indicator of bigger things going on in homes. So I don't want to miss something big going on in someone's life and not be able to help a kid, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, the survey we did in July, we had close to 50% of our families that indicated they would do a blended or remote option. And now when we look at our number, we're close to 20%. I think part of the reason for that decline, number one, we only had about 1,500 fill out the survey. So we have a much bigger sample size now. But I think one of the bigger things is, as parents have made that choice, we have explained the requirements and we're requiring them to sign an assurances form. So I think some people are self-selecting out of that because they understand the rigor of what we'll be doing in the fall, the time commitment for kids, the involvement of parents is going to be greater with our remote option than it was in the spring. So that hopefully will help some with that, that we're only getting people who understand and are committed to what the requirements are. But I'm sure that it's not perfect.
And then if today were our first day of school, what level would we be? I'm just curious, Dr. Carlin.
So we met, our first Friday meeting with Fannie County Health last week, that'll be a weekly event that we do with them, looked at the gating criteria that we've been working on for probably four to six weeks with them. And based on, that gating criteria has kind of six indicators from the health department and about three from us. And we only had one indicator that would be flagged right now. But knowing that there were a number of those indicators that wouldn't have a chance to be flagged until we get into school, we determined, we jointly agreed that we would be starting at level three. And again, we'll meet again this Friday. So that could change before our first day on Monday. But assuming that there's not significant change in our community over the week, I anticipate we would be at level three in our plan. Now, again, remember, the governor's order until September 15th layers on top of that. So the restrictions there related to masks, hand sanitizing, social distancing and temperature checks will be in effect until September 15th.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a follow-up question just after you asked yours, Laura. Are we doing the social-emotional curriculum for remote learners too? Awesome, thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Mr. Nordby, for making the best of a bad situation. And I appreciate that, how hard you're working to keep the activities and the sports and the clubs going and getting kids in school. Because I know it's a lot, so I just want to say thank you.
And I appreciate that. I just go with the theme of the evening that was set by the first group. We're building the plane while we're flying it. And we're all just trying to pitch in and make it work. So I do appreciate your comment, though it means a lot. And it will mean a lot to the teachers and other folks that are watching. I got an awesome group of people that I get to come to work with every day. And I know this isn't the topic, but quick shout-out to my staff as seven of 12 Crystal Apple semifinalists, I think, are from Garden City High School. So, you know, they're just, they're awesome, hard, hard, hard-working folks that, you know, they want the best for kids. That's why they're in it. That's why they're in it. So thank you.
Can I add to that a little bit? I think Garden City High School might be the most complex organization in Fannie County, probably in western Kansas. Tonight, I think we got a little snapshot for the kind of issues that Mr. Nordby and his team really have to think about. And in a normal year, that can be pretty overwhelming when we think back to what's all involved. And when we made the transition to this school in 2012, some of the things that had to change just because of the building change and how traffic works in the morning and the afternoon and how we schedule classes and what classes we offer and all those kind of things. Now you throw on it all these extra things that we're having to deal with to keep students and staff safe, but yet still provide that quality learning environment. And it really is pretty amazing. So Steve, again, I echo Jennifer's comments. Thank you for your work on that.
I appreciate that. It became more, and I know you're all watching the things around the state and things, it became more apparent to us this week, the task and how difficult it is in that if you look at the 36 6A schools in the state of Kansas, the 36 largest schools, 2/3 of them aren't going to open in the fall. Only about a dozen of them are going to open the doors in the fall. It's hard. And so my team has really worked hard and so I appreciate that. It is a team effort in anything we do and I appreciate your support.
Yeah, and I want you to also know is, hopefully you don't take any of our questions and to overshadow the great work that all you guys have done.
No, and I don't. And you know, your questions about the health surveys and things, those are things that we're still kicking around, trying to decide, are we going to do the Google Form, which has its benefits? Are we going to do Skyward, which has its benefits? So yeah, I mean, absolutely.
And it's also to bounce ideas off of you from my organization in business and how we approach things, especially coming into a school. I could tell you first thing unless I sit on this board and was able to understand all the dynamics that you guys are all facing each and every day. And we haven't even opened a class yet. But to know that helps me and my group and to spread the word out there with all the other construction organizations. Hey, don't go in that school without going to the front office. You might want to call ahead, say you might be on a bad day. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. The questions I ask, I don't want to overshadow all the great work that everyone's done.
Not at all, not at all.
Thank you.
Madam President, that's a great segue. We are asking the board to approve this change to our COVID-19 response plan. Again, sorry for the short notice. I know things are happening a million miles an hour. But I want to point something out too. The school plans that we've included in our plan are really included to help build the context of the other pieces of the plan, the levels frameworks that we have. It's really how those are applied. And then some of the department plans about those pieces. So I guess I'm kind of asking you to approve this with the understanding that there may have to be some tweaks that Mr. Nordby makes. The survey is a great example. You know, maybe using the track for the gym, in the gym for lunch doesn't work as well as expected. So they have to do something a little bit different to make that work. So it's really the intent that we are going to be spacing and distancing kids at lunch. That's kind of the policy level of this. But I just hope you understand that as we get into this, the first few days of school, as teachers find out what works, as administrators find out what works in these school plans, there may be some adjustments. If it's something that's significant, ultimately it will come back to the board. So we inform you about it. But I don't want to hold us to that until we have the next board meeting. So those plans are really included to build the context for how those other pieces will be applied. And I think you've seen that consistency across all of them, so.
Just don't forget to land the gear on the plane.
Yes.
Okay, so to me, anyway, what it seems like we should maybe consider is approving this today and then maybe having some policy language for us to consider at the next meeting with regard to that the school part of the opening schools document is...
Implementation discretion or something?
Yeah, is something that, you know, still up to, I mean, because the way that VO may do something is going to be different than the way that Pymell's going to do something. And so we're not going to necessarily be dictating to those different principals how they're going to be running their different schools. I think that's definitely in the weeds of things and not something that is necessarily our intent. But maybe like the front part where we're talking about the operational levels, that's, in my opinion, our policy. And then the rest of it where like Garfield talks about their stuff and then Elementary talks about their stuff, that seems to be more implementation. I don't know. What does the board mark?
You know, when we first approved the plan with some implementation discretion understood, it seems to me, Madam President, that we're still there. And tonight, this is one piece of the rest of that that we have already approved. And so if it seems appropriate to you, it does seem appropriate to me that we would approve this plan for the high school in a consistent context with what we did earlier. And it's up to you whether you think that, or the board's pleasure, whether we need to address it specifically in a future draft policy. It may be best, in my mind, to simply approve this under the same characterization as the other pieces of the puzzle that we've already acted on. And again, look forward to reporting and further consideration as we go.
As a blanket policy for the district? For each elementary school or just high school?
No, for the district.
Yeah, okay.
Because the discretions were already described earlier, if we recall, in earlier board meetings. And we're all sort of flying with this framework. And this completes the framework. And if we are still comfortable with the discretionary implementation aspect of it, that seems to me to be very consistent with what we've already approved with the other pieces.
And I felt that way before. I just wasn't sure if that was the will of the board as a whole. Because I didn't want to necessarily, anytime one of the schools wanted to change something, come back. But I didn't want this board to feel like, I mean, if Dr. Carlin wanted to put something in our notes saying this was a change that Jenny Wilson made with regard to how they were socially distancing, if that would need to be brought before, I mean, if it was going to be considered something that needed to be brought before the board. So I guess in creating the agenda, I needed, I guess, some guidance from the board as to how they viewed that type of thing.
I think that it goes, it's more generalized by, and because it was grouped by Elementary, Intermediate, and kind of like that, it was a general, kind of more... intermediate, and kind of like that, it was a general, kind of more, maybe skeleton. It's not so specific that you can't individualize it by building. I feel that this brings up the consistency of the plan because it now, for this particular level, gives a little bit more detail like the other plans had. So I think that just approving this as is, I mean, works for me, but obviously it's the will of the board.
Dr. Hannigan, what are your thoughts?
I have the same thoughts. I think, I think that we all would recognize what would be a fundamental structural change in the plan versus administrative or simply logistics change in the plan. We might not be able to define it tonight, but I think all of us would be able to know it when we see it. And I, I would be in favor of giving the schools, the buildings, and the administrators the latitude to make some administrative and logistic changes and leaving to Dr. Carlin to decide when there's some type of structural change that really should be brought to the attention of the board.
Okay. Okay, seeing enough nods on that. Then do I have a motion to approve the high school plan?
Zoned.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Janine. Any discussion?
I have a couple things. I just, I'm going to contradict myself here because I thanked Mr. Norby and said that it's a great plan and I truly believe it is. Just at this point, it's still not something that I can vote for as long as masks are required. But I feel like it will pass. So, but it's still not something I'm comfortable with. I, and I'm hoping that as masks are required, if we go in at level three, that there's some observation and documentation of the kids' learning abilities, the attendance. I'd be curious to see if that's something that affects attendance. That's kind of why I asked with the remote learning, are, are parents keeping their kids home because they're fearful of the virus or they're fearful of the side effects of a mask? And I know I've dwelled on this, but it's something I truly believe in. And I, and I hope we also observe the staff and, and see how they're doing because this is a big change for them to be able to teach, especially to the little kids. And I think Mr. Norby or someone on the board talked about the personal connections at the high school level even, that may, there might be an interference because of that. So I just wanted to share that before we voted because of my stance on that. And considering the risk of this virus is still larger than the risk of our kids being in masks long-term. And keeping in mind is, and I'm not sure if anyone has heard in the wind what the governor's planning to do come the 15th, but keep in mind the possibility is there that it will be extended and what we're going to do once the 15th gets here. So that's, I, I think there's some great things in the plan and I don't know what the other option is, but personally and from where I'm sitting in my seat as a board member individually, it's not something that I can vote yes on as long as that mask mandate's in there without some type of exemption waiver.
All those in favor of the high school response plan, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Well, good luck to the high school and to everyone. Just, I guess technically now less than seven days since we're in the evening. So good luck next week. So now we're ready for board open discussion. Jennifer, do you want to start this off?
I think I've talked enough today. Thank you.
Dana?
Um, yeah, so I, I don't know about you all, but I definitely feel a level of anxiety. So I can't imagine what you all are feeling as the start of school approaches. I know my kids are super excited, so that's a good thing. I just, I'll be praying for all the teachers and staff. Just, I wish everybody good luck, I guess. I don't even know what the appropriate word might be. Break a leg? I don't know. But I do just appreciate so much all the work that everybody has put into it, the time, the emotion. It's a lot. So it's very, very, very appreciated. So, thank you.
Janine?
Kind of along those lines. I, I appreciate everything that's been done. I'm excited for the beginning of school to start. I know my kid is excited for the beginning of school and most of the other kids that I've talked to as well. I know the teachers have been working hard to prepare that and just want you to know that you have our support. We're here for you guys and we want to make sure that everything goes well. The work that's gone into this is just incredible and it's amazing to see because I've talked to other, people from other districts and they don't have nearly the plans laid out that we do. So it's always nice to see that piece. You know, I'll lower this for a minute.
KJ, thank you so much for the budget and putting it out and laying it out very nicely so that even I can understand it. If I can understand the numbers and where you're going with things, it's, it's really, really good. I did want to say congratulations to the, the semifinalists for the Crystal Apple Awards. That is a very intense process that those teachers go through to be able to be selected as finalists, so I wish them the best of luck. And congratulations, Dr. Carlin, on your award. Thank you for your exemplary leadership. We are truly blessed to have you here and working to, to lead us all into the future.
Mark?
I, I think I'll stay real short and just echo the, the words of thanks and congratulations. And, you know, in this whole process and challenge, it would sure be nice to have something that is very objective in how we keep everyone safe in this collective, community, and school environment. And maybe that'll come up. But until then, it seems like there's a lot of judgment. And so I'd have to echo good luck in that judgment and the implementation of that. A lot of that depends on good, honest communicating and, and a whole lot of respect for each other. And so, yeah, my prayers go out for the whole implementation of that, so, thank you.
So, Dr. Hannigan?
You know, I was reading something today that was talking about sort of this mindset that's developed that as soon as the vaccine is developed with the virus, that the virus is going to disappear, when in, when in fact, this virus will be with us well past all of our lifetimes. And we will be able to add it to measles, mumps, polio, all the other types of health threats that exist in this world. And we will never be able to vaccinate our way to extinction of the virus. And it's unlikely to go away on its own. And so I, I think we might find ourselves in the years to come getting practice in this particular health crisis. And we don't know for any type of certainty how effective or how soon a vaccine might come. And we certainly have some very worried people that are unlikely to, to receive the vaccine. And so the, the nice thought would be that now that we've approved our plan and we're ready to start school, that our, our tough part is done here. But in fact, and from, from my feeling though, that this, this is something that we'll be dealing with, that future boards will be dealing with way past our time on this board. Not that I want to depress anyone. Just a little upper.
That's hard to follow.
I was going to say, you want to follow that up, Alex?
Congratulations, Steve. We're lucky to have you. Thanks for all the hard work you guys do and your staff that backs you up. That's it.
Well, to follow up on Janine and Mr. Norby, I want to congratulate Alana Bates-Aaronsen from Horace Good, Kelly Butcher from Garden City High School, Deborah Chapel from Alta Brown, Diana Sue Deniston from Jenny Wilson, Yuri Dubrinsky from Garden City High School, Amy Harris from Kenneth Henderson Middle School, Melissa Hensley from Garden City High School, Alice Hilt from Garden City High School, and, can I just call him Bijou? Is that okay? From Garden City High School, Catherine Ockempah from Charles Stones, Jane Schneider from Garden City High School, and Lyle Soba from Garden City High School. They will all be interrogated by the Garden City Chamber of Commerce very soon for their next step in the Crystal Apple Awards. So I'm very excited about that, that group. And right now, knock on wood, November 19th, it's still an in-person event. So we will see what happens. Hopefully that will still be able to happen. And it is on Dr. Watson's calendar. So if not, maybe we can get Zoom to work too. So, and he'd be able to appear that way. But very excited for that event for Crystal Apple. So thank you all for, I know that there were a lot of nominations even given the odd year that we had last year. So excited for that. And excited for the school year. Good luck, everyone, to the teachers, to the students, and the parents. It'll be a great year, no matter what. It'll be a great year. Interesting, but great. With that, the next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, September 14th at 6:00 PM. And we will be back in our board meeting room at the Education Support Center at 12:05 Fleming. We do need to go into executive session. How long do you think, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot you, Dr. Carlin?
Can I just throw one quick thing in there? So as unusual as this year has been, and it has been the most unusual in my career, what I'm most impressed with is the enthusiasm that our teachers and our staff coming back have demonstrated. Mr. Perea, I'd like to thank you and your leadership with GCEA for that. I know there's a lot of uncertainty and concerns that staff members have, and we're all working very hard to alleviate those concerns, understand those concerns, and, and still get kids back and, and get off to a great start. Friday, our teachers come back for a workday. They had four very good days, I think, of professional development and then, in the prior week. And then Monday is our first day back with kids. And there is a lot of excitement around getting kids back in the schools. So I think people are ready for that and, and really looking forward to it. So that was it. I would say 10 minutes for the executive session.
And Mr. Perea, thank you very much for the invitation to the new teacher luncheon. It was a great event and thank you for having that for the new teachers too.
It was certainly an honor being able to serve you guys and be a part of that. New teachers are very excited at all times and anyway with lax time to meet some of the faces that they will get to see throughout the year. Perhaps they wouldn't ordinarily see. I really appreciate you guys being there. It was an honor for me and I know it was an honor for our kind of new council.
Thank you. 10 minutes?
10 minutes. Madam President, I move we go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, beginning at 8:03. And the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at 8:13. I would like to invite Dr. Carlin Heath Hogan to join us in this executive session.
Do you want to say 8:05 to give us time to walk back to?
8:05 to 8:15.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? We'll go into executive session. Do you want us to go back?